Good evening. We'd like to begin our monthly meeting, January the 25th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is being a virtual meeting again, and at this time, we are open to approval of our minutes and operating statements from December.
I'll make a motion that we approve our December operating statements, December 21st, 2020 council meeting minutes, January 11th, 2021 work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for December 2020.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Okay, all those in favor, just give us a thumbs up. All right, noes, motions carried. Thank you. All right, uh, we'll go right down to the mayor's report. We get down to, this afternoon, I had a meeting through MML with their state senate president Ferguson and House Speaker Jones. We discussed the MML priorities for this year. We have one major priority bill this year, and that is the H R funding. And we seem to have support on both sides. It passed the house last year and court session was canceled. So we have to go back to the house and see if we can get it passed. We have sponsorship on both sides of the bill. Hopefully that sunset will be, that bill would be passed this year and the sunset will be gone as of 2025. We'll, we'll get back to our 100% funding on that. Right now, we're still planning on having a mayor's conference. That will be February the 5th. It's on a Friday. That would be virtual. Usually we go to Annapolis during the session and have a two day session. We're going to do it in one day this year. And that will be on February the 5th on a Friday afternoon. W R C C meeting is this Wednesday. That also be virtual. Everything's virtual. And as of right now, MML is still planning this summer conference in Ocean City. There should be some information coming out probably next month on hotel reservations and also the seminars that will be there. So everybody can start planning for this summer's conference. That's what our plan is right now. There was some mention if 60 to 70% of the people who were fascinated by then, that the conference will be held in person. So that's what we're playing on right now. Let's see what I have here. Oh, just like to mention, in case you're not aware, Carroll County lost a very prestigious person that's helped a lot of municipalities out in the county for years. Frank Schaefer, which was a county employee for many, many years, retired. And over the last several years, he's helped different towns as their acting town manager and on special projects. He passed away Saturday of Battle of Cancer. So keep him in your prayers. There's probably going to be something going on. I don't have any, anything on that yet, just exactly when that's going to be or anything. Let's see. Oh, yesterday, Union Bridge was on TV, Channel 11. Donnie saw it yesterday morning. I saw it at lunchtime. Young lady lives up on Benham Street. She's a foster parent for dogs, animals and animal shelter. And she always has a dog that is crippled or something. She's got this cute little dog that's in his little wagon that has no hind legs and hips. And she was featured down on our walking trail on Channel 11. So, you know, Union Bridge is getting a little publicity there. So I guess they might show it again, but that was very interesting. She was on there and gave a nice little speak. And we saw the trail and so, so another little thing for Union Bridge. That is all that I have right now. I know John's got some things coming up. So we'll go on to the attorney's report. John.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. I have two brief updates on some of, on our ongoing projects relating to U B Solar. The first is that, as you all know, and I, I know you've been getting piecemeal emails from time to time. The solar project site plan was in fact refiled back in the end of November. It seemed to work through the holidays very slowly. There weren't many comments yet. I talked to Ned Human because I think the anticipation was that he would be bringing that back to the planning commission by now to discuss any issues and sort of explain how it was progressing. And in Ned's judgment, it wasn't ready to go back to the planning commission yet this month. So the planning commission, in fact, did not meet this month. And I think the expectation is that Ned would like to see more of the county comments come back before he brings it to the planning commission. So it's, it's working its way through. I get periodic calls from U B Solar's attorneys because they want to make sure that they're ready to move forward with the annexation petition at the right time. And so I think that will follow pretty quickly once they get their site plan close to approval. So that's sort of the update. We're still probably a few months away from the actual annexation portion. But I know they are working hard to get their comments resolved with the county to get their site plan off to the town and the county planning commissions. The second thing I want to report about is the Locust Wetland Project. And again, that seemed to drag sort of through the holidays, but we have had some more recent communication from Chris Hein at the county. And it looks like they are processing that through the county commissioners to transfer the two acres paid by the county, but owned by the town. And then that would allow for that project, for further design of that project that we've talked about. And you all, I believe, have a copy of the original concept plan for that. But it sounds like there's been some red tape at the county to just kind of move it through the process to get the acquisition completed. As of, I guess it was earlier today, we sent, at the request of the county, we sent a letter from Mayor Jones, just acknowledging that our understanding of, of the process and the ultimate ownership of the project. And that was really nothing more than what we've been talking about for months. But for some reason, I guess they're dotting the i's and crossing the t's now. They wanted something for the county file. So I'm not aware that there's any issue there, but again, that's dragging, but it is moving forward. And then finally, the other matter that's under my time is the approval of the private citizen list for the disorderly house abatement committee. I must confess that got on my time really just a few hours ago. So I'm not aware of what needs to be done in terms of discussing that list or whether you've all, all are aware of that list, that it's just a matter of taking a motion to approve the list. So Dawn, you may have to help me with that a little bit.
We talked about this back at a work session and I called the five people that's listed below. And they all agreed that they would be willing to serve if they were called upon. Mayor Jones was okay with the individuals that I had called. So I just need a motion that we can go ahead and accept these as the private citizen list.
Okay. Sorry.
If we have a case come up, we're ready to go.
All right. The people on the list, in case you don't have it in front of you, are Thomas Long, Sean Daly, Brett Grossnickel, Jim Ral, and Roxanne McGuire. So what we would need is a motion from the council to approve that as the abatement committee pride of its citizen list. And then my recollection is the way that will work is that if a case comes to the town, that the town would then designate two elected officials and then one of the people from this list. And this would be a standing list so that it would be in place when and if the case comes through.
That's correct. So we have a motion to approve the private citizens list.
Make a motion. That was read.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, give me a thumbs up. Put it to screen. Okay, nays, eight motions approved. We'll put these on our list and we'll be ready for a case I think we may be having real soon.
Very good. I think I heard a one Donald Wilson's voice, who I don't see on the screen. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm on the screen.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just not seeing it on my screen. I, I just want to make note that you are participating to the extent you weren't showing up. So everybody's here.
Yeah, I see you, Donald.
Okay.
Yeah, I have everybody on screen, John.
Okay, very good. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, just go back on my report. I forgot to mention that I did also sign a letter and send back to the county, reference the parking lot down by the, off of Locust Street for the kayak parking lot that they've talked about for about a year and a half, two years. That project is ready to get started this spring. So, you know, hopefully when the weather gets better, we'll have a kayak parking lot and we can get that going. Also, online, I also have all of my notes here. Didn't see it. I need a couple more people for our elections committee. We have elections in town this year. We have a couple of people on the committee and, and one gentleman, depending on his work, may not be able to, he's the chairman, he may not, or he's on the committee. He may not be able to attend. Of course, we had another person that moved out of town. So I'm hoping that within the next few days, if you know any volunteers in town that want to work on the election committee. It's a long, boring day. You get the town office about six o'clock at morning. You leave that evening after the, all the votes are tallied. And it's a very slow and boring day. And hopefully that this year we'll have elections. We won't be like some of the others. We won't have interference from outside of town. So it's election for in-town residents and let's hope we have no interference from outside people this year again. So we're going to hope for that. Okay, we'll move down to committee reports. Brian Cleese, Deputy Cleese, is he on this evening? I haven't seen him.
He's in office and counsel.
Okay.
Between the dates of December 21st, 2020 until January 24th, 2021, the sheriff's office responded to 60 calls for service within the town of Savinian Bridge. Out of those calls for service, only six called required to report, which were the following. On December 22nd, at approximately 1:33 PM, deputies responded to the unit block of South Benham Street in reference to a domestic investigation revealed that a juvenile parent got into a verbal argument over his phone charger, which turned physical when the juvenile assaulted the parent. Juvenile was referred to the Department of Juvenile Services and case was closed by arrest. On January 1st, 2021, at approximately 7:43 PM, deputies responded to the 200 block of East Outer Street in reference to an assault. Investigation revealed that known parties engaged in a mutual assault over child custody issues. Parties were referred to the district court commissioners to follow. The case remains open pending follow-up. On January 2nd, at approximately 7:18 PM, deputies responded to the 100 block of East Outer Street and registered domestic investigations. Investigation revealed that known parties got into a verbal argument over alcohol, which turned physical during the application. The suspect damaged the victim's cell phone. Parties were referred to the district court commissioner's office to follow. The victim did file charges in reference to residency and case was closed by arrest. On January 3rd, at approximately 10:13 PM, deputies responded to the unit block of North Main Street in reference to a domestic investigation revealed that parties got into a verbal argument over, over the relationship, which turned physical. Injuries were observed on the victim. The suspect was arrested and transported to the Carroll County Detention Center without incident. Case was closed by arrest. On January 26th, at approximately 3:49 PM, deputies responded to the unit block of South Main Street in reference to a domestic investigation revealed that a juvenile offender assaulted the parent after being asked to do chores. And juvenile was referred to the district court, I'm sorry, referred to the juvenile services. Case was closed by arrest. And on, I apologize, I don't know when that must have been January 16th or 6th. On January 10th, at approximately 11:43 PM, deputies responded to the 100 block of East Outer Street in reference to a domestic investigation revealed that known parties got into a verbal argument, which turned physical. Both parties were advised it was a mutual assault and wishful pursuit charges. Case was closed by lack of prosecution. All participants mentioned above were innocent until proven guilty in court of law. Other due to several complaints of criminal activity at the old PNC Bank property located at 18 North Main Street. PNC Bank has posted property with no trespassing signs. As a result, residents can no longer, will be on the property. PNC Bank has requested that strict enforcement be conducted, which has already begun. Anyone caught in the property could be issued a criminal citation for trespassing and posted property, which could result in a fine of $500 and/or 90 days in jail. Please remember that if you park a parking meter within town, that you must pay the meter between the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. So if you pay the parking meter, could result in a fine of $5, which kind of goes hand in hand with the PNC Bank, since a lot of residents are using that as a parking lot. Traffic complaints continue. We, on the ride around town, will be worked accordingly. Please obey all traffic laws and it's the only warning you will receive. Just to remind you, make sure that you are locking your car doors and keeping your valuables out of sight, since thefts from others are on the increase throughout the county. If you see something, say something by reporting it to the police. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Brian, when you talk to the people from PNC Bank, I know they're not aware because the people that are in charge here are, never came to Union Bridge, but at the entrance to the parking lot and where you come out of the, coming out, and it used to be on all four entrances, there's chains there and they had locks on there for years ago, before they put the drive-through there. I used to put the chains up there on weekends to keep people off that lot. This has been like 20 years ago. And they do have chains that is their public parking lot. They can chain that off if they want to. They want to keep those cars off of there. I think the one post on the one lower corner on the back where the garage was, it burnt down. That post is gone and the chain's gone, but the other entrance still had the chains there. So they can, they want to send their people down here. They can put the post back and put the chains there and block that parking lot off. And they do have on top of the building, they have the big compressor that's on top of the building. I think a bearing must be out of it because it makes one heck of a rattling noise that you can hear from almost a whole block away.
Yeah, I heard that last night as well. And the chains, they were just afraid about putting the chains back up because of vandalism. But I can follow back up with them.
Okay, just say they, it used to be put up on the weekends all the time years ago to keep the, on Friday night, they'd put it up and take it back down on Saturday or Monday morning, keep cars off the lot. Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, we're moving down our list here. Next, we have public comments and concerns. See, we have Marty Hill, Jim Pike. Glad to see you this evening. You gentlemen have anything you'd like to?
I was wondering if there's any update on the possible acquisition of land that Union Bridge Solar, or whatever they're called, has offered for sale to the town, I'm told, for relocation of the wastewater treatment plant. Since I think it's been determined that cannot be rebuilt or expanded on the current site.
Well, we, I had just got that notice last week as the first that I've heard anything about that because all before, it kept telling us we could build on our existing lot, on our existing plant. And I just got that notice last week that was sent to me and I think it was Thursday or Friday. Said you couldn't build there. The plant itself was okay, but you had to go through the flood plain in order to get to the plant. And I'd made that clear to M D E a long time ago that I wanted something in writing in reference to what they could do on that site. We weren't going to proceed on that site if we didn't have something writing by them, from them. So we just got that last week. And so now, I guess, and we have, our mic's not on with us this evening, Mike Reynolds. But we have been applying for the last several years for grant money for some upgrades at the sewer plant, some monies, and we were eligible at the time when those grants were put in. We were always denied for the last, I guess, I think I can go back, like the last three years, we'd been denied, been denied of grant money. So now that we know that we had the letter from M D E, we can go forward with the agreement that we had with Solar Energy about purchasing the five acres down there so that we can, you know, make some plans and start to proceed with that plant on that site. But M D E drugged their feet a heck of a long time, giving us a, a letter saying that we could not build on that site.
Surprised.
Yeah.
That they drugged their feet. May I ask, to what entity has Union Bridge been submitting grant requests?
Now, I'd have to go back and pull all those files, Marty. I don't have all those paperwork here and Mike's not with.
I was just wondering if that was just federal, the federal government through water quality or something? Or if it possibly USDA?
If I'm not mistaken, I think almost every year we apply for different agencies, you know, according to that. And, you know, of course, we all know that the grant money for a sewer plant is for the upgrades or exist, or building a new plant. You can get funding for the existing capacity and your existing residents. But any new development has to pay for itself. So we are.
I think, I think that's very clear and always been recognized. But there have been points in time where Union Bridge leadership has communicated that any replacement plant would, the cost would be, even for the existing users, the responsibility of the developer that was pushing that. But yeah, I believe the Union Bridge does qualify for USDA grant money due to the income, the income level of Union Bridge residents and offer to, offer to help in doing any investigation or research into that.
Okay, that'd be much appreciated. We have gone through those income surveys before for the town. And, and unfortunately, that was some of the past administration that was said that all upgrades would be paid for by the developer. So that's past and beyond. We're moving forward. We're very interested in having some development in Union Bridge because we are at dire need of development. All of our businesses, our fire company, our schools are hurting from it. We just can't stay stagnant. And we all know that, you know, like you and every other developer, there's nowhere else in Carroll County to build. So you're going to come to Union Bridge and be careful what they ask for because when it starts to grow, it's going to go. And of course, I'll be dead and gone. It's been 40 years in the making. I hope it's not another 40. I want to see houses be built there before I leave this seat. And I think we're very, very close now. We're continuing to work on these grants. Grant money is a little bit more available now, according to the federal people. And like you're aware of, we are scheduled to have a meeting on February the 2nd. So we'll see where that goes from there.
The meeting on February 2nd is what?
It is with, that's with some county and I think Congressman's Office.
Okay. If we reach out to Dawn, can we get that information?
Yes. I thought they already sent the meeting request to you also, but I can forward it to you. But we also, their application for M D E for the wastewater treatment plant is on Mayor Jones' desk, ready to be signed. So we can send that in again.
Okay, I'm stepping to the side a little bit, but still dealing with sewer. I still would ask the council to consider releasing half of the reserve capacity that is being held for commercial or industrial development in order to allow some development to begin to take place while we're going through all these other efforts. I believe that half of what the town is holding in reserve for industrial development would be sufficient to allow the first phase of Jackson Ridge to go forward, be on the ground, and put additional funds into the Union Bridge, I guess, your, whatever you call your sewer fund. What it's, but it's, end of the day, it's money. So I would ask that to be considered again. We'd be more than well, more than willing to participate in the cost and engineering of a new plant, particularly the additional capacity that would be included for new development.
Okay, Marty, I'd say part of one conversation that we had, I did do some checking on that. And our sewer people and M D E, we have 20,000 gallon in reserve. And, and M D E requires each municipality to keep 20,000 gallon in reserve for emergencies such as overflow capacities, flooding and whatnot. So that 20,000 gallon that we have there, we cannot release that, even half of that, because there's times when we have flooding right now and everything. We're over capacity and we're in violation. We have to do a consent order. But if you know of anything, John, other than that, I think that 20, that 20,000 gallon, I wish Jeff Glass or somebody was here, but he is who I talked to. He's our superintendent down there. And that 20,000 gallon that we have has to be kept in reserve for that.
Jeff should be on that meeting on February 2nd, so.
Sure, yes.
Okay, well, good. Then meanwhile, we'll do some investigative work. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Comments and concerns? All right, we're going to move on down to committee reports. We'll start with Ellen. I think she's got a rather large agenda here this evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have an MML Engagement and Outreach Committee meeting on Wednesday. I've been doing some research into trash and recycling and different ordinances. We don't have that in our code. There's been some issues that have come up that I need to address with that. I've also been working on getting information gathered up for the nuisance ordinance. And once I have that together, I'll let Dawn know so she can convene the committee. I think that's all I had. And if there's something I don't know I had.
Hey, I know probably it's been maybe a year ago, we discussed maybe checking in to see what it was going to cost to have a shredder come into town one day so people could go and have their paper shredded. I know there's a cost to that. It's not free. And there's a limit of how many boxes or bags you can give at a time.
Yeah, I can get that back together and give it to you at the work session, the actual costs and everything.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
All right, Laura. All right, Laura.
All right, so I had the Christmas lights turned off. They are still up because Lehigh is closed for their winter break. The CCR meeting that was scheduled for January 14th was canceled. I'm in the process of getting quotes for new Christmas lights and Christmas banners. And then our mowing contract is up for renewal, and I have the information for that. It is from RLS, who we have used for the past many years. And this contract would be for the years of 2021 till 2024. And it will include all the mowing areas marked on the Union Bridge map. There'll be 26 cuts per season. The work will be completed as in past years. Removal of lawn debris is a dollar five per bag. These prices include the maintenance of all the newly cleared off hills at the community center, and the prices are as follows. The new price for the year April 1st, 2021 till March 31st, 2022 is $916.44 per month or $10,997.28 per year. The price for April 1, 2022 through March 31st, 2023 will be $916.44 per month or $10,997.28 per year. And the price for April 1st, 2023 till March 31st, 2024 will be $962.44 per month or $11,117.28. There will be a fuel charge added if prices exceed $3.75 a gallon. This price will only, it will be prorated based on gas prices, but will not exceed $30 a month and will only apply during the growing season. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the bid for RLS contracting as I just stated.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Are there any questions to the proposal? Hearing none? All those in favor, eyes, give me a thumbs up. Okay, nays? Okay, motion's carried. Thank you, Laura.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, and while we have you there, I'll get with you and Ellen to get with you. We are doing, if I were mayor, contest again. It's going to be a little bit different this year because it's virtual. So we'll have to see when we can get the information to the schools and what participation we'll have within the schools this year on that, so.
Okay. I can send them an email and find out what's going on if they can, well, let me zoom in with them.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Edgar.
I don't have anything to discuss.
Okay, Amy?
I don't have any water or sewer. I've had no calls since our last meeting, but I did want to say that the Valentine's tree in the middle of town looks really nice.
It looks very nice. I think, I think you're going to do like every holiday or every, whatever it is, they have something here. It looks very nice on the corner. Okay, Donald?
The whole place is kind of quiet on the streets. Waiting on it to see what's going to bring on tonight with the snow, hopefully snow, not ice. Kenny's been doing a little patching of somewhere. I saw my portholes, potholes, not portholes, potholes in town. So things been a little slow. I will say, Union Bridge is on TV Sunday morning. Or maybe a couple of times, see the day air, Park, Channel 11, then a little video, and you're on air with that lady with the doll with with no back legs. She's also written a book. My children's book, so we're moving really along. That's all I have.
Okay. I don't see any other hands up. Glad to see you, see Mandy. Glad to have you with us. Okay. What's that? Okay, my schedule here, I have our next work session meeting is February the 8th at 6:30. Our next council meeting will be February the 22nd. I don't think that coincides with, I think that's the weekend before that is the President's Day weekend, right, Dawn?
I believe so, yes, correct.
Okay, all right, so the 22nd would be good for that date. Okay, is there any further business before this council this evening? Not, we're in line for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we are adjourned and thank everyone for their cooperation tonight, and we look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you and good evening.